I'd like to call this meeting to order tonight. This is a special meeting to discuss our master plan and it's being conducted with our Planning Commission and City Council. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ryan.
And actually, we'll have Denise call the role.
Thank you.
Denise, you're on mute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Denise, you're gonna need to speak up.
Give it another try, Denise.
Mayor Pro Tem Cameron?
Here.
I called Mayor Smith, is she not there?
Not here yet.
Okay, Councilmember Frank Rogers? Councilmember Jen Reisner?
Here.
Councilmember Randy Reed?
That's you.
Here.
Councilmember Dollar Ginozalos? Councilmember Sarah Deming? Councilmember Brandon Smith?
Here.
Chairman Jerry Halli?
No Jerry.
Commissioner Brian Ledoux? Commissioner Fleming? Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Moss?
Here.
Commissioner Ray Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Seidler?
I see that Ashley Smith has joined us online.
Also, it looks like Commissioner Brian Ledoux has joined as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. So we're ready for a staff presentation?
And we'll pass it over to Patrick.
I'll give a brief introduction and then I'll invite our folks from House Seal Levine to make a presentation. So, as you know, last summer, we began the process to update not only the city's comprehensive plan for the first time in 19 years, but also our zoning subdivision and development regulations, which we're going to be combining into one title. So we've begun using the term Unified Development Ordinance to describe the full zoning subdivision and development regulations. So what you're going to begin seeing from this point on are drafts of the forthcoming documents. Last week, we received both a summary of the land use core element to the comprehensive plan and the first five chapters of the Unified Development Ordinance. Now, because the comprehensive planning is, comprehensive plan is advisory in nature and zoning, the Unified Development Code is obviously regulatory, our city attorney wanted to make sure that she had adequate time to review the drafts for legality, for the ability to have them properly codified. So we're not ready to bring those forward to you just yet. We should, we hope to bring those forward to you at a special meeting, potentially March 10th. But we do want to move forward tonight with the comprehensive plan's core land use element. And for that, I would like to turn this over to Josh House Seal, or John, Josh Kuntz of House Seal Levine.
Thank you, and thank you to the Mayor Pro Tem and Council for having us today. I'm gonna share my screen here. Can everyone see our meeting cover slide?
Yes.
All right. So thanks again to everyone for having us here today. Thank you for the introduction, Patrick. Like Patrick said, I'm Josh Kuntz. I'm a project manager for the Canyon City Comprehensive, Canyon City Comprehensive Plan Project with House of Levine Associates. And I'll let Jackie and Tricia introduce themselves also. Jackie, you're on mute.
My apologies. My name is Jackie Wells of House Levine, and I'll be leading the zoning portion of the project.
Hi, I'm Tricia Parks, also with House Levine. I am working on the comprehensive plan side with mostly graphics and text.
Yeah, thank you. So tonight, what we have for you, a brief process recap, and then the focus of the discussion tonight is going to be on the land use plan memo and the maps that you have in front of you. We're gonna be basically checking in on a key piece of the plan as we continue working through the process. So just a reminder, we, like Patrick said, we're developing the comp plan closely in tandem with the new Unified Development Ordinance, or UDO. And tonight, as we look at the land use plan and the next steps for the UDO, what, one of the things we're really gonna be looking at is how the comprehensive plan and specifically its future land uses tie into and inform your zoning districts. So recap of where we are. We've moved through steps one through four for the comprehensive plan, and also through step eight for the UDO, and we're still on schedule for the project for completion in June 2021. Step five is where we are now. It's exciting for the comp plan because we're kind of moving out of that where do we want to go phase, and we're starting to get into the how do we get there part of the planning process, which is really the planning part of the process. The land use plan and the map that we have in front of us tonight is the foundation for the recommendations and the policies that are going to help the Canyon City community achieve the vision, goals, and objectives that we discussed with Council and Planning Commission last time. So, land use plan and the land use plan and the map, what is it? The city's comprehensive plan is gonna ensure that decisions made today result in efficient and sustainable growth in the future, and that's what the policies in the plan will be written to do, to ensure that orderly growth. And having a plan in place is gonna help the decision makers, the people who are in this room, identify and respond to changing community needs and desires in a thoughtful way and, rather than in a reactive way. And the land use plan really is the centerpiece of that process. It's the centerpiece of the comprehensive plan. So the map that we're, the maps that we're looking at, they're not predictions. They're maps, the maps and the supporting text depict what the community wants to see happen in the future, and it's a guide to future planning. It shows where various uses should locate, and it provides a framework for elected and public officials to evaluate development proposals. So whether you're a council member or a planning commissioner, developer, business owner, new resident, you can take a glance at this map and you can get a general idea of how Canyon City wants to grow and develop in the future. The map and the plan reflect feedback that we heard in outreach, our larger scale outreach, online outreach. We had a program of stake, key stakeholder interviews, and then also meetings with this group, with the Council and the Planning Commission. So just to kind of set the stage, I want to touch briefly on how you did this back in 2001. Patrick mentioned at the outset here that it's been 19 years since the last comprehensive plan update, and the previous plan used a series of land use maps, they called them pattern maps. It's on pages 67 to 69 in your current comprehensive plan, and these were a series of maps that were showing your commercial areas, planned commercial areas, industrial areas, mixed use, multifamily, public semi-public, and general residential. So these maps were effective, but the downside of this method is that it's hard to see how everything fits together in one place, how they all interact with each other and work to get, work in relation to each other. Now, this is something that you've seen before. This is a page from our existing conditions report. Future land use is based on existing land use patterns, that's important. Between Tricia, Jackie, John, and I, we drove up and down almost every street in the city. We categorized and annotated all of the existing land uses, community-wide, as well as in your urban growth boundary. So this map shows not only the municipal boundary, but also the larger urban growth boundary for Canyon City. The land use plan and map doesn't veer too sharply in a new direction for the community. It builds off these existing land use patterns that are already on the ground today, and it promotes that orderly growth that's, that fits with what you're already experiencing. And it identifies what, what land uses should be on your infill parcels and what the highest and best land uses are for the community. So we're building on this existing conditions, or existing land use map. And then this is the map, the, this is the map, this is the future land use plan. The land use plan aligns with the vision and goals that we discussed previously. We talked about establishing land use and development patterns that ensure land use compatibility and alignment with infrastructure capacity, providing a distinct, providing distinct residential areas and neighborhoods that offer a diverse mix of housing types and price points to meet the needs of Canyon City's current and future residents, promoting Canyon City's downtown by encouraging local business development, entrepreneurship, and tourism, establishing commercial areas that promote employment growth, and support a diverse and stable economic base. So when we talk about all those, those goals for the community, where are those things, where are those things gonna take place? And that's why we have identified on the map, mixed use areas in the downtown, regional and corridor commercial areas along Row Gorge Boulevard or Highway 50, differentiation between light industrial in industrial parks and open air industrial further out in the growth Business parks are identified on this map, and those are all identified to get at the community's vision, goals, and objectives that were already established. Another thing that this land use map does that was not in the 2001 comprehensive plan is it shows your priority annexation areas as part of the land use chapter. So the city already identified these five priority annexation areas for future growth, and really, that's an excellent job of identifying where annexations should take place. While we created a future land use for the whole growth boundary, these areas warrant special attention. So these are the areas that are best positioned to take advantage of your existing infrastructure, municipal utility services, and planning for these areas is gonna help encourage efficient development patterns that are contiguous to existing development and at densities which are, which will have relatively low municipal and utility costs. So it really is a good practice to have these identified on the land use map, or as part of the land use chapter. The land use plan is gonna be followed by the draft core elements. Those are mentioned in the memo that's in front of you, but each of those draft core elements are gonna provide some more specificity for specific areas of the city that are identified on this map. So the housing and neighborhoods element is going to have its own map and get at a level of more granular detail for the city's residential areas. Economic development is gonna provide more, more detail on your commercial industrial areas. Likewise, for the downtown and the riverfront, there will be a transportation and mobility element, public services and facilities, cultural and historic resources, natural resources, environmental features, and open spaces. And those are all in development now, but they're all going, they're all already identified on these, on these maps to a certain extent. So this differs a little bit from your previous comprehensive plan land use map, but it also starts to establish clearly the link between land use and zoning, which is particularly important for this project since we're doing them together. Your new plan is going to really be very clearly connected to the UDO, and it's going to be extremely easy to use and understand for staff to see how the UDO implements, implements the future land use. And this, this plan is really the foundation for the UDO. So just to kind of recap, the land use plan is, it's a guide for the city's vision, goals, and objectives. While the land use plan is colors on a map, it's not your zoning map. It represents where and how Canyon City should develop to meet its goals and aspirations. And unlike zoning, the land use plan and map doesn't regulate the height, the bulk, the scale of development. And zoning is, does regulate those things at, for specific parcels, and sets the design and development requirements and standards to implement the land use plan. So to fully understand how the land use, how land can be used, you're first going to need to know the land use classification in the comprehensive plan, and then also take a look at the specific zoning district of a parcel that'll be set forth in the forthcoming UDO. And ultimately, the focus is on implementation, using the zoning ordinance and the UDO to implement the comprehensive plan's land use recommendations. With that, I do have the memo open and the specific land use designations, and if there's any questions or points of discussion, we're here to answer those now before we turn it over to a discussion of the, where the UDO is at.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the panel? I do have a question. My question is, the, you know, considering the differences between the, the land use map and our zoning map, that will, that will jump out at us as we're looking at that, you know, there's, there's obviously a classification of legal non-conforming for zones. So where, you know, the, I see that as where Council is, and the Planning Commission will be active perhaps in, in unifying. So maybe you could talk a little bit about the, how those two interact from the staff to the Planning Commission to the council level?
Yeah, sure, and I may ask Jackie to chime in here in a minute, too. As far as the future land use that's depicted here on this map goes, it would not create any non-conforming uses because it's not regulatory. So it's a vision of what, what the community wants to happen on the, in these areas. Now, there may be a variety of zoning districts that can implement the different land uses here, and your, your zoning districts are what would create legal non-conforming uses. So if somebody had a, an auto body shop in an area that was zoned for a single-family residential housing, for example, and that's where, as the property sells, the city has an opportunity to enforce the zoning code and bring those properties up to a conforming use. But this plan wouldn't, or this particular map wouldn't make anybody's properties non-conforming. Did you want to chime in on that at all, Jackie?
Sure. So the land use plan would be used, as you all are considering or reviewing development proposals in the community. And so if you get a rezoning request for a parcel that's identified in the land use plan for commercial, and they're proposing that it be zoned industrial, you might want to push back on that and see if that really is the type of use that is desirable in that area in Canyon City. And so we want to use this map as a guide to, you know, make those decisions for development, for rezoning, so that the city is growing in a way that's consistent with the land use plan. And so here in a couple minutes, we'll go through a set of slides that shows those areas in the community where the land use designation does not align with the underlying zoning designation. So we'll look at those, just to highlight where those are, as well as introduce some new zoning districts for proposing to be included in your code, so that if there is a business park development, for example, the city has the zoning district in place to accommodate that type of use where the, the land use plan envisioned it's locating.
Thank you. Any other questions? So please proceed.
Okay, Jackie, I'll just click through these slides here.
Thank you. All right, so this map, just like I was saying a couple seconds ago, shows the parcels are the areas in the community where the future land use designation, so one of these future land use categories does not align with the parcel's current zoning classification. So there are some areas where the district exists to accommodate these types of uses, but the parcel's not currently designated as such. And there are also a couple areas where the zoning district does not exist to accommodate these types of uses, and we're gonna be giving you an overview of what those districts would look like, and then discuss them in greater detail during our next meeting, potentially on the 10th. Skip ahead to the next one? All right, so these are the parcels where there are existing zoning districts that would accommodate the, the types of uses that are envisioned in the land use plan. So estate residential, single-family residential, mixed residential, multifamily, you do have those existing zoning districts to accommodate that type of development. Regional and corridor commercial would be just your, your general commercial district. Light industrial, of course, will fit with your industrial district. If we go to the next slide, we'll take a look at the, the two areas that don't align with your current zoning districts. So these are the neighborhood commercial and the business park land use classifications. So to accommodate these going forward, we're proposing that two new districts be included in the code. So the NC, Neighborhood Commercial District, and a BP, Business Park District. So we're not proposing or recommending that the city proactively rezone these parcels, but we just want to have those districts available within the code to accommodate this type of development if it were to come before the city. Any questions about the alignment between the zodiac map and the land use plan?
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Ashley.
So you said that this is something that we wouldn't necessarily adopt anyway, is, is there any benefit in adopting some of those things as a way to help promote, like, the industrial park or a business park and things like that?
Yes, definitely. So if the city wanted to proactively rezone, let's say, the, the business park area, it would definitely signal to developers, to business owners, that that was an area that was, the, the city was hoping for development, for a different type of, of development. So there is that benefit. The, the business park area, because it is a larger parcel, and I believe a fewer property owners, it wouldn't be as big of a deal to, to rezone that as compared to the neighborhood commercial, which is several smaller parcels sort of scattered throughout the city. So that would, of course, when you do a map amendment, you have to notify property owners, et cetera, so it could be much more onerous to do that for those smaller individual properties. But the larger, like, business park areas where there, there are larger parcels, more consolidated in terms of ownership, and that could be a strategy to help encourage that type of development going forward.
And what kind of strategy did you use in determining what, where and where those new zones needed to be?
So through the land use process, so the, how they developed the land use map, we compared the, the underlying zoning of those areas with that land use classification. So when we looked at the current zoning districts, we saw that the type of business park development that was envisioned, or the type of local commercial development that was envisioned, wasn't necessarily accommodated in the way that, that was envisioned in the, in the land use plan. So that's why the, the new districts are being proposed. They come straight from those comprehensive plan recommendations.
Thank you.
Jim? This is Jim. The, the land use map, refresh me in terms of specifically how that was developed.
Sure. So we, we looked at your past comprehensive plan, your existing land uses, your existing zoning code, and the, things that were identified through community outreach, what the community wanted to see as, in the future for land use and development.
Okay, so seeing as that apparently the land use map is the catalyst for everything else, it would seem to me like we need to at least give that map a blessing before we start building on everything else.
Which is why we are here this evening, yes, sir.
Is to bless that map?
To have Council and Planning Commission have a concurrence that, okay, this, based upon not only where we are, the where we are stage, but the feedback that we got through all of the public outreach that we did in the early part of this process, this is what we have learned, the public and the trends that we've noticed are pointing us for future land uses. And that, with the blessing of this map, we then have the way to go forward with the remainder of the comprehensive plan, and we've got the ability, once we finish the UDO, to begin guiding future rezoning requests against that comprehensive plan.
My request would be that, would seem, I would like a hard copy of that map so that we could at least visually study it. There's, there seems to be a lot of, I'm gonna call it clutter going on, on that particular map, and to just visually see it, whether it be on my phone or on there, I, I'm not so sure I'm comfortable making a decision to say that that sure I'm comfortable making a decision to say that that particular map there is good to define the future for the next 10 years. I mean, that's basically what we're saying, right? Is that's the, the foundation for how we're going to develop over the next 10 years. I think for us to just come in here at a meeting tonight and look at a presentation and to sign off on a map, I'm not comfortable with that.
Yeah, I, I think a council member, if I may, I think that's a good point, that the, it is the foundation for the comprehensive plan. One thing, as you read through the memo, the, the classifications that go with the colors on this map are, they are written, a definition of what the classification is, what the land use is, and then what the intent for each of the land uses is. And the, the way that these are written is to provide flexibility and opportunity to, for decision-making, but also to provide some structure, a framework for decision-making that informs zoning changes, just like Jackie was saying, and is something that the, the council and the planning commission can consult as development applications are reviewed. So again, this is a, absolutely, it's a foundation for the planning process, but it's also a framework that provides you some, some room to work in as you, as you look at it. Just something to consider.
And we, we can get hard copies of the map to everybody if, if you'd like. We, we sent an electronic version of this document out yesterday, but we can provide hard copies if you'd like.
Well, but we did, we did not get copies of the, of the other map showing the variances from current zoning.
You're talking about the zoning map under the UDO presentation?
No, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And the, the reason for that is because we have not finished reviewing the UDO, and we're not ready to present it at this time.
So, John, I have a question again.
Sure.
So in consideration of, you know, talking about the future and what other kind of land uses we want, and, and looking at the map, there's not a lot of green space, open space, or park space in Canyon City. And part of that was intentional by our forefathers of having to go to a vote of the election of the people to establish a park. But it seems like, looking to the future and developing the community, the way we would like to maybe see it, be a little bit more modern and for our quality of life, is maybe some more recommendations for some open space and parks in the community as those opportunities may arise, or was any consideration given to that? Like the Abbey property, that's going to be developed, and it would be nice to accommodate some of those things.
Yeah, excellent point. So there's a few things to consider about, about that. The Abbey property, I think, right here, there is a, a master plan that's identified a mix of uses that includes some green space, maintaining some green space as part of that. And one of those subsequent core elements of the comprehensive plan is going to be for the parks, open space, and environmental features, and it will have recommendations for maintaining green spaces and active and passive recreational areas. The, outside of marking green spaces on city-owned lands, sometimes it's something that can be a little touchy. You wouldn't want to mark a privately owned property as a park, a desired park for the future, because that, that can have some legal ramifications. So there will be recommendations for areas where the city should consider new parks, new trails, expansion of existing parks and recreation facilities. And then when there's an area like the Abbey property where there is a master plan that's in development that shows that green space will be a part of the mix, that will be on the map, too.
Okay, thank you.
And could, could we see the, the, the next map again, please?
Sure.
So, Patrick, tell me again why, why it's premature for us to be looking at this?
So this map presupposes zoning. Zoning is part of the official Title 17 Unified Development Ordinance. And I know you've mentioned on a couple of occasions, legal nonconformities. Legal nonconformities occur when you apply zoning to real-world situations. We, the, the city has done this in the past, and this is one of the reasons why we created the R1A zone district, to sort of accommodate a lot of these lots that were undersized or, or for some reason didn't meet minimum lot frontage requirements, as a way to take them out of the legal nonconforming status and put them into a zone district that would potentially work for them. We aren't creating zoning with what you're looking at tonight, we're creating the future land use vision for the city. The advisory document is to say, okay, when we adopt zoning and we consider future rezonings, or when we have people coming to the city to annex, we now have a vision against which to review those codes. Every one of the rezonings, planning commission and council have seen, have come with a criteria that says, how consistent is it with the comprehensive plan? Well, at the moment, we have a comprehensive plan that is 19 years out of date and has been surpassed by a number of decisions that have been made in the interim. So what we're doing with the, the master land use plan that Josh presented here tonight is saying, okay, this is our vision, the foundation, as council member Meisner put it. The zoning document will come with the actual text of the zoning when we're, you know, formally ready to apply the zone districts we're going to be creating. We don't have that for you to see tonight, we're still reviewing it to make sure of its legal defensibility and its codifiability. So that will be the subject of our next in, in-depth review of the, the text of, at this point, the first five chapters of the UDO is what we have.
So, but, but maybe I don't understand, this is not the future land use zoning alignment?
This is not.
Because after we adopt the master plan?
Yes.
Or bless our land use plan map, then, as you go through the UDO process, this gets sharpened up. But this is the current zoning compared to our, to what we've got as the land use plan, is that not correct? Excuse me.
Okay. So let me, let me rephrase that question to make sure I'm fully grasping it. You're asking, is this the current zoning map for the city?
No. The, so we have, we have a draft land use plan map.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This was developed against that and our current zoning.
Correct. This is an outset of the recommendations of our future land use plan. It needs a bit more refinement, but this is sort of where we're beginning from.
Okay. So, but I, I don't, I fail to see why that would not be relevant to our review of a land use plan map, because it does give us some idea of where we are today. And as we're making decisions about where we want to be in the future, looking at something like this would, to, to my way of thinking, would be informative, considering that it's a draft and that as we go through the UDO process, there could be tweaks to it. And, and, you know, having said that, if, if our attorneys are not comfortable, you know, giving us a map, a draft map such as this review, I could understand. But it seems to me this is kind of an integral part of our review that we want, that, I hear Jim saying, that, that we want to do for the land use plan map.
So the relationship between the future land use plan and this map is that the future land use plan has to come first. The, the actual zoning map is a, is an outcome of that, and it will be reflective of what the current conditions are and what the new zone districts that we're creating are. We don't have those zone districts to present to you yet, and there will be some slight differences to what zone districts we have today.
If I could just chime in for just a minute.
Sure.
These, these three, these three final maps are, essentially, these are teeing up what the next conversation with planning commission and council will be, which is based on the draft future land use map, which we think captures where Canyon City wants to go for its future growth and development. Based on that, that map and your current, current zoning code, these are the areas where there are some alignment issues. Now, the UDO that we are, that we're working on, the, what Jackie touched on a few minutes ago, is that the new districts, the two new districts, and the alignment will make sure that it's, the two pieces, the land use plan and the zoning code, work together harmoniously, and it's going to be easy when you get a, when you get a development proposal or a request for a rezone, it's going to, it's going to be easy to understand where, how the, how the zoning fits with the future land use map. They're going to be like two volumes of, of a set. So, yes, though, Mayor Protem, you are correct that these, this is your current zoning matched up against the, the draft future land use. Right, Jackie?
Yeah. So just to clarify, the map is showing the future land use categories that were included in the, in the larger map. So this isn't showing what the, what we're recommending the zoning classifications for these parcels be, we're just highlighting those parcels and what their future land use classification is. And then we're, you know, singling these parcels out because the current zoning classification for the parcel would not support these identified future land uses. So this is not a proposed rezoning map, we're not recommending that these parcels be rezoned to a zoning district that would align with the, the future land use map. We're just showing you those areas that do not currently align. So what's on the map here are the future land use categories.
I, I understand that.
Right.
And we, we do have another comment, but, but if I can, Jim, the, it, nonetheless, this is what our current zones are compared to the future land use, the, the land use plan map that we're being asked to give a thumbs up to tonight. And it seems to me that understanding that, that the, that as we go through the UDO process, there can be changes because of whatever factors. But, but this seems to me to be critical information for us to be able to resolve, to look at the land use plan map and help understand what some of the, what some of the flashpoints perhaps might be as we go through this public process. And so, and so it seems to me that this is a, a critical map for us to look at. This is, if I understand correctly, this is not draft, this is actual compared to a draft. So this is an actual map compared to a draft, and we're being asked to approve the draft. And so seeing this, to me, is a, is a critical piece. Jim?
So to reiterate what, what Mayor Protem Heimerich is saying, fundamentally, what you're asking us is to approve this map, because this map identifies the substantial changes or conflicts with the new plan and existing zoning. When I look at that other map, I have no clue where there are potential problems. When I look at this map, as I begin to understand it, I can say, oh, okay, there's an area where there's a conflict that we now have to make a decision, do we change the land use map or do we accept the land use map and suggest a change in zoning? But I, I have no way of, in my fundamental non-government mentality, I have no way of knowing where those areas are without somebody identifying them for me.
So, so just to rephrase, maybe, this map that's showing up here is filtering out the clutter that you see in the other map?
Sure.
Yeah. Maps, right.
Okay.
I mean, when I look at the other map, it's, it's a map, but I don't know what it mean, I mean, I understand what the fundamentals and the colors mean in the map, but what does it mean relative to zoning in the future? I don't know, I got to study it for 10 years, but this at least lays out some concept of, here's some problem areas you need to address.
Okay.
I think. John?
Yes. That, that's, that's, that's right along with my thinking, yes.
And just, Mayor Protem, if I may.
Sure.
One, one other thing to consider is that the, we're not asking, the, everything here is in preliminary draft form and will be until adoption in June. So the, the future land use map can change right up until adoption as we, as we work through this. So when this group meets again with, with our team and we go into a deep dive on the draft districts toward the end of this month or the beginning of next month, after staff review is complete and attorney review, if there's something we need to go back and tweak on the future land use map, we can still do that. That's, that's part of the process that we identified with you all at the outset, is that we'll be working on this hand in hand with, with you throughout the process. So the future land use map, I don't, I don't want to give you the impression that this is the final and only chance that you get to look at it and examine it and study it. And it's something that, you know, right up until the day before it goes to adoption, if there's some changes that need to be made, or there's some things that we need to consider, we're going to keep working on the rest of the comprehensive plan, but we can continue to tweak the map based on direction from council, planning commission, and staff.
Jim?
I, I recognize what you're saying from a, maybe from a geographical standpoint, but from a fundamental standpoint, that map is critical to this whole plan. And, and I recognize that, that we've got the option to change that, but in six months, I don't want to be in a position where we say, oh, that part of the map's wrong, and then we hear, well, because you're going to change that, we need to change this, we need to change that, we need to change that, because they're all interrelated with each other. I think we need to have a good fundamental understanding and acceptance of that map before you people move forward and spend time developing the rest of it. And if it's not that critical to your plan, why are you talking about it now?
So what I, the, yes, Mandy, go ahead.
So I was just going to add also, gosh, my voice sounds weird in this. One of the things that I wanted to add, piggybacking off of what you guys have said, is just that, you know, being able to make good decisions requires us to be able to have all the information. And so I do feel like this particular map would have been helpful for us to be able to review prior to this, to be able to ask specific questions about it, because like you, I don't want to come back later and say, oh, now we need to do this. I mean, at the end of the day, the conversations that we're going to ultimately be having, potentially, if we go forward, is going to be with some of those indicated areas on here. And so I just think that, I agree, it would have just been helpful to be able to have, like, the complete picture. I feel like we have part of the picture, so that way we can actually influence the next steps that you guys are doing, so that way we're not, you know, coming back to the same thing over and over, so that way we can have a good, a good comprehensive plan, because we're all on the same page.
So can I, can I make a suggestion that I think may resolve the conflict that you've highlighted here? I think we can easily get you hard copies of not only this map that we've got on the screen here, but hard copies of all of these other maps here that were presented this evening?
11 by 17, please.
We, we can get them 24 by 36, if you'd like them.
Well, the, that might not be bad, actually, because they're, they're pretty busy maps.
Absolutely. We, we can print them to whatever size you want. And I'm going to suggest that maybe what we do, instead of having you bless these maps tonight, the, the planning commission's next regular meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, the 24th. We do not have any public hearings at the present time for that meeting. Maybe what we do is reconvene in two weeks to go over this information again.
I'm not sure your microphone was on, but the, yes, that, that sounds like, that sounds like a plan. Can I say that? And I do, I do want to say to the House CEO, Levine, you know, members here, that we understand, I, I believe that we understand the process. understand, I believe that we understand the process, that it will be iterative and that there are adjustments that we're going to need to make as we go along. And we're not looking for finality here, but we are looking for information that we can use as a council and a planning commission to help us think down the road about where we're going to be when, when all of this is done, considering it is draft and we are working on it.
And with our, you know, next scheduled, or, you know, tentatively scheduled, joint planning commission, city council meeting being March 10th, if, if we could make that work on the 24th, that, that would help us not skip a beat in this process and try and keep our deadlines.
That would, that would be great. I'm, I'm certainly in favor of that, and if we can make that work, that would, that would be really great. But I really would like a little bit of time, spend a little bit of time with, with the two maps, to see the difference between the two, what they're, what they're telling me, to, and think about it a little bit.
So we, we will get these maps printed, and we'll get them over to you before the end of the week.
Okay. That sounds good.
It looked like Commissioner Ledoux had a question that he posted.
Brian, you got a question? Maybe not. What did you, did you-
He typed one out, it's on the chat box now.
Yeah, it's on the chat.
His audio's not working.
Oh, the audio's not working, but it's on the chat box. Can someone read that? I don't know-
Brandon, can you bring up the chat box, please?
Um, I can read it. Says, can we get the proposed land use data as a layer on the city's zoning viewer? That way a web-based detailed review can be easily completed.
Good job, Rob.
So I'd have to check and see if they have that in a format that we can overlay within our GIS. I don't know that right now.
Okay. You can take that under advisement then, please, Patrick. Appreciate that. Yes, Jim?
My personal opinion is, is that while I'm a deadline person, I would rather have some thorough acceptance of planning and, and council on that development map and miss some deadlines than I would rushing it or trying to make a deadline. I mean, if we have to study this for a month, for all of this group to come to a good consensus that that makes sense, so be it. But I just find it interesting that we're talking about the development for the next 10 years, and bam, we just want to sign off on it. It, I, I'm just not comfortable with that, personally.
The, I do know that the schedule has been developed, considering that, that we do have a grant and that there is a deadline for spending the funds, and because of that, there is a little bit of pressure on us to be able to move through this in a fashion so that House CEO Levine can do their work also. So it, but nonetheless, I, I hear your comment, and, and we do have, I think, a resolution right now. We're going to get to see these maps, and then we're going to meet again in two weeks to, to look at this and talk some more.
So, Mayor Protem, I'm comfortable meeting again in two weeks. I've had the opportunity to screenshot the maps, and they seem pretty consistent with what we already have. I don't see really any, I mean, just from what I've been able to tell here, there's not anything big and dramatic or earth-shattering. It seems pretty in line with kind of the things that we already have, it's just cleaning it up a little bit. Am I, House Levine, do it, is that, do you have any other spots that might be a little bit more alarming for us to focus on?
To a certain extent, I, I think you, you're, you're absolutely right. These are built on your existing land uses and based on the, the development patterns that are already happening in Canyon City. And another thing I just wanted to point out is that we, yeah, we'll, we'll give you these maps, and you don't have to screen grab them, we can give you the full size, we'll get them to you.
Yeah, and the big ones will be nice. And it's not something we're adopting right away, this, on this current one, these are just suggestions for potential changes based on desired development.
Exactly, and these, these three maps here are, aren't even part of the, these probably wouldn't be in the final document, these are illustrative to show where, how land use, future land use and zoning align, and to set up how the new zoning code will supply those new districts to meet the future land use, not, not do any rezonings.
Right, okay. Well, I think I'm ready to move on to the next one, if everyone else is.
Is, does the panel have any more questions or comments? Then, then we are ready to move on.
Okay, and I believe you've already seen item two or item B, that would be the preview of the, the section on the Unified Development Ordinance. Jackie gave that presentation earlier, so you've sort of had a compressed A and B this evening.
Great. So I take it we're, is there, is there anything else then to come before this panel here tonight?
Not this evening. As I said, we will get you hard copies of all of the maps that you've seen this evening. Hopefully what you will find is that the map that you just saw, the, the current development, the, the land use plan and current zoning alignment map, as well as these three maps here, should not be providing you with a whole lot of new surprises. I believe what they're doing with the, the zoning alignment map is peeling off the planned development district zones to show the underlying land use zones within that PDD, and that's, that's probably the major change that you're used to seeing from our current zoning map. But when you compare this to what actual land uses are out there, there shouldn't be tremendous surprises. If there are, obviously we'll fix that, but hopefully you won't find that.
Great. Well, I'd like to, yes, Jim?
In, in that documentation, are you going to include that memorandum that's got all that description of those?
That, that was sent out, and I can certainly print more copies of this if you'd like.
Hard copies.
I need a copy of that, please.
Okay.
And I'd like to, I'd like to thank House CEO Levine for being here and staff for the, for the work they're doing on this, this is really good work. You know, I, I am impressed, I do feel I have some information needs, but, but, but thank you, and I, this is, this is great stuff, and it looks sure like we're going in the right direction here.
Well, this is exciting for us, it's been a long time since Canyon City has looked at itself in quite this way.
And with that, I think we're adjourned.